This conference will now be recorded.
We're going to call this meeting in order for us to exceed it. We're just waiting on the judge. It's time to start the meeting, but the judge is on his way. So, to swear our new candidates. Please hold on, but this meeting is in session.
You have this word last meeting. I mean through brain cells, I got two. Yeah, I see three of them. That made me laugh about them. It may be a shadow.
I talked to Greg on Sunday at church and he said something about it. He said like 6,000 pounds. I'm like, maybe.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to do the office to candidates. Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I say your name. Julie Wayne, City Commissioner. Julie Wayne, City Commissioner for the City of Lovington. The City of Lovington, New Mexico, New Mexico. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America. And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America. The ordinances of the City of Lovington. The ordinances of the City of Lovington, New Mexico, New Mexico. And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of my office. And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of my office to the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. So help me God. So we all hang on. Congratulations. Okay. Going on to reorganization of the commission. I will open the floor for nomination for Mayor.
I'd like to nominate Robbers. Commissioner.
Motion was made to nominate Commissioner Roberts. I will second that motion. Is there discussion? There's no discussion, roll call, Chen.
Mayor Vio.
Yes.
Mr. Gandy.
No.
Mr. Bolt.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Congratulations, Robbers.
Well, probably just trying to keep my chin.
Well, thank you. And hopefully we'll make it through tonight. Be my first one to run, so we'll do our very best. David's computers did. No, it's good. Oh, yes. As the next order of business, we will take nominations for Mayor Prochit. Do I have any nominees?
I nominate Commissioner Gandy.
Nominate. Commissioner Trillo.
I have a motion for to nominate Commissioner Gandy. I have a motion to nominate Commissioner Trillo. I will open the floor for seconds on those nominations. I will second Commissioner Trillo. Do I have any other seconds? Having no further seconds. I have a motion and a second on Commissioner Trillo for Mayor Prochit. Shannon, roll call.
Commissioner Gandy.
No.
Mr. Bolt.
No.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Commissioner Vio.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberts.
Yes. Go to intersection. You know, call the order. Oh, oh, we already, I'm sorry. You're up. Thank you. I'm still struggling with his. Maybe the. I know this meeting in order. Chen. A roll call.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy.
Here.
Commissioner Bolt. Commissioner Vio.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Here.
You stand up right with me. Father, Lord, we just thank you for this wonderful day. Lord God, I just thank you for each commissioner that is here today. Lord God, I just pray that you would give them the wisdom and the foresight to lead this community in a positive direction under your will and in your direction. Lord God, I just pray for our city manager as he leads and guides our staff, our fire department, our police department, our parks and wrecks, our cemeteries, all the different departments that we have. Lord God, I just pray that you watch over him as he and lead him in a positive direction for this community. Lord God, I pray for the finances of this community as we come under new leadership. I pray that you would bless that. Lord God, I pray that you would bless our citizens during this time of prosperity, that their wealth would prosper, that their family time would grow and they would find you to be their Lord and Savior. Lord God, I just thank you for this time. And again, Lord, I thank you for the commissioners as they do their best for this community. I pray that the community would rally around them and support them and encourage them in a positive direction. Again, Lord, we thank you for all that you do. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag, the state of the United States of America, the seat of the central perfect conscience of the
I will now entertain a motion on the approval of the agenda. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve the agenda submitted. Have a motion and a second on the approval of the agenda. Is there any discussion or correction? Having none? Roll call, though.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes. Okay. Now, I will entertain a motion on consideration of minutes.
I would make a motion to approve consideration of minutes. March 28, 2022.
Second. I have motion second for the approval of the minutes. Any discussion? Any correction? Hearing that, we'll call for roll call, though, please.
Commissioner Bolt.
Yes.
Commissioner Vio.
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
All right. Proclamation, before us. We have a proclamation, of course, on fair housing. Whereas fair and equal housing is a right guaranteed to all Americans. And whereas the principle of fair and equal housing is a fundamental human entitlement. And whereas all citizens have the right to live where they choose within their financial means. And whereas people must not be denied housing because of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, handicap, or familial status. Whereas we must, as individuals, assure equal access housing or access to housing for all in our communities. And whereas the City of Lovington, New Mexico acknowledges the importance of assuring fair and equal treatment to all citizens. Now, therefore, I, Howard Roberts, Mayor of the City of Lovington, do hereby proclaim April 11, 2022 as Fair Housing Day in the City of Lovington. Commissioner Staff Report, Shannon.
Mayor Commissioners, I would like to see about getting scheduled together for us to have a working budget session. We kind of tentatively looked at a possible week on the calendar. And so I'll probably be getting with each and every one of you to check your availability to set aside possibly a little hour meeting. And then we'll have a follow-up meeting at least once prior to when the final wise budget comes back to the commission for your approval. There will need to be resolutions for what funds that I'm proposing to set up. That needs to be in the DFA. So that'll be part of what we're going to be going over in those meetings. But I'd really like you all to be, you know, an active part of this year's budget, seeing as how we're going to be making a lot of changes to it. And I just wanted everybody to be kind of in the know and to understand it. And that way, in how question and answer section, and I can go over it in great detail. So, there's always a post staff and I'll send out emails to each one of you to try to get a schedule.
Is that all you have?
That's it.
Chief.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, some of the update, some of the things we've been working on are in-car MDTs or mobile data terminals will be shipped on May 10th. We'll get them installed shortly thereafter. We're waiting for final approval on the state-funded defense and behaving project for the police departments. The city manager today approved a purchase, also state-funded, of new tasers for the entire department. That's eight thousand five years. That'll be state-funded. Our previous tasers are out of service life. And in addition, finally, I'd like to invite not only the new commissioners, but the existing commissioners that if you ever want to come to our police department, meet some of our people, see some of the things that we'll be asking for in the Capitol Beltway project coming here. Be more than welcome. And also to visit the Lee County Communication Authority, which I think the city manager did about a week ago. Just kind of see how that works and how that process is taking place. That's all I have.
Chief, what's up?
Mayor Commissioners, just wanted to give an update as far as tomorrow's weather. It's supposed to be really windy. Wanted everybody to be aware that we are going to be under red flags. So we'll have additional staff on standby for mutual aid and also for our own district. But that being said, also, one of the things that the fireworks will be doing this weekend or this week, we'll be reaching out to the fireworks distributor or the fireworks sales people and let them know that we're probably going to be going out for a drought proclamation. There is no indication of any kind of moisture coming in for the next couple of weeks. And we typically have to do that 30 days prior to the sale. So trying to get a head start on it and let those individuals know that we probably would be seeking that drought proclamation. And that's it.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yeah, so I'd like to thank Trillie, Del, anybody else in the other department heads that we're able to put our package together. That we have, that we're able to look at and we understand and the questions are ready. I appreciate that very much.
I'm good, Mayor Roberts.
Mr. Gandy. Congratulations. Okay. David.
Hi, yes, there, Mayor Commissioners. I just wanted to inform everybody that we are actively accepting applications for a couple of departments that we have not had luck on these past couple of weeks. Full-time head cook, and these are, these are positions that became vacant. They weren't open after the freeze or anything. But a full-time head cook and a part-time kitchen aide at Senior Citizen Center, a clerk at Motor Vehicle Department and a part-time clerk here at the utility water department billing. So, or water billing department. So if anybody wants to turn in applications, they can pick up and turn them in at City Hall. And that's all I have.
Chairman.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I've got five items. And after I discuss the items, if you have any questions or comments, then we can proceed from there. First thing, we have the splash pad at the park. I did meet with Public Works Department and we have a tentative date of May the 6th. We have a contractor out of Rio Rancho and he was with us on Friday afternoon. He looked at the system and he indicated to us that May 6th will be the tentative day to get that splash pad up and running for the community.
So that's good. Are these the first dates here or that'll be operational?
Operational, that's the tentative date, is May 6th. We have created a steering committee to assist the sewer plant, the staff and the director of the sewer plant. The steering committee will consist of myself, Brad, the director. It would be pretty much the entire staff at the sewer plant. It would also include the mayor and Commissioner Bolt. We have a meeting scheduled for this Wednesday at 4:00. Our goal as the steering committee is to assist the water plant with any issues or problems they have. That is our ultimate goal. And so we will have our first meeting this Thursday and we will report periodically to the commission on where we're at, what are some of our objectives and some of our goals to fix the issue that we have over there. Softball, baseball fields are coming along. I know they've started practice. The girls have started practice. They were supposed to kick off their season next month. So we have made progress. I want to, I want to thank the staff, all the volunteers, everyone that's been involved. Our goal is to get sports up and running in Lovington. Now, our fields are good to go. Could they be better? Absolutely. I know COVID had an impact, but we're moving forward. And I'm very excited that we're going to have sports in our community. Our goal, again, I've repeated myself, we get sports up and running. My understanding, we have about 125 girls ready to play. And I think according to Evelyn, about 300 boys ready to play ball. So that's, that's really good. Excited, and we'll move forward on that. Let me see. Auction. We plan to have our auction sometime in May. I met with an individual out of Roswell. He's going to come to our community. We're going to, we're going to get, I think, a total of 25 pieces of equipment. And we'll have our auction at the old water department. It will be advertised on social media, on the newspaper, and also on our newspaper. Auction. Number five. I have, we have the animal control and code enforcement department as one. I decided to split that department. So we have animal control, just, it will be its own department with two people. And then we're going to have an individual strictly code enforcement. She has been assigned to the police department. And we plan to take a more proactive approach when it comes to code enforcement. We will continue to support our animal shelter. I did meet with the Maddox Foundation and I just, I'm very thankful they were able, they're going to give us a $15,000 grant. And there's another private donor that will match that $15,000. So we should have a total of $13,000, $30,000, excuse me, $30,000 for animal control. So really excited about that and we will move forward. Okay? In respect to our water system, we plan to bring in a consultant to do a complete analysis of a water system from our wells to our pumps to our storage. And so we will, I will, I will move and work on bringing somebody in. And this person will do a complete analysis and give her report to me and also to the commission on where are we right now with our water supply and what is it that we need to do to move forward? If there's any deficiencies that we need to fix, we definitely will address those issues. At this time, I stand for any questions that the commissioner may have for me.
Commissioner Bolt.
Del, as far as our fresh water, when is that going to be? Going to have a meeting?
When? For the, as far as coming in and looking at our wells and everything and.
What I plan to do is hire a consultant first, bring a consultant in and have that person actually do analysis of our entire water system.
When are you looking to have that?
I would like to do, I would, I'm going to start the process tomorrow. And I would like to have somebody on board, hopefully by the end of April to next month.
Any other? That's all.
Update on Main Street. They should have been doing the pressure test for the new extension of the, more of the water line. They will do the potability test this evening. So we should have results from that within the next few days. And everything's pretty much moving along there pretty smoothly. We are seeing a few charges that will come through. But it may balance out for rock excavation on the waterline. When they get large rock, it wasn't in the original bit. But a lot of that may, we're not seeing anything as of yet. They're not pushing a change order up on this yet. Just something I'll keep you advised on. Jackson Avenue, we actually hit a pocket of clay. If you've noticed how deep the trenching got there right beside KFC, right behind there. The clay, when you hit that, it's not, you can't leave it there. You can't build a road on top of the clay. So they've had to over excavate by two feet. We're letting that clay dry out because it was very moist. The engineer stated he thought that that was due to the cracking in the road, just years of rain getting down into that clay causing that to hold that moisture. So we're letting it dry out for review. Then we're going to put some geogrid down, it's a geogrid matting. And that stabilizes that clay. And then we'll put in some base course, subgrade base course. And then of course, go on with the rest asphalt back up to the level we're supposed to be. Um, I gave you guys a couple of papers on some different properties. I just wanted you to look at and take home. Next time we meet, let me know if you are in favor of selling those properties or not. So I can work on getting some RFPs together if you want to sell those properties. And.
Are there requests for them or is this?
Yes, there has been requests for those specific properties. That's why I brought that to you. I will have an RFP ready for 1201 West Tyler. It's a residential lot that the commission had asked me to look into. Of course, finding our deeds and getting an RFP ready. We were waiting for Tracy to pass a class so she could be the procurement officer because we have had one to legally sell properties. So she has done that. So now we're putting together some RFPs and we'll be bringing those four to you. Any questions?
Permission of the three. Crystal, can on the Main Street road project, can Jim provide us with dates from patient? Like for instance, what he's doing, like I say, for instance, from courthouse, can he give us a target date? That way the local businesses will know when the roads will be back open.
Yeah, and he actually does keep in very good contact with the local businesses. He actually walks up and down the road quite often, let them know when he's moving from one face to the next. So he keeps them informed, but I can get that list too and the way I can. And I know we always have the, the reports that we've put out on our website of when they're closing what sections and the dates, so.
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Okay.
That's the reason why, I don't know if he's hitting everybody or maybe he's missing some, but I did have some. But I think it would be very proactive to at least have a date.
Okay.
Any other comments? I'm letting her finish.
Crystal, it's been brought to my attention that especially while Main Street is effectively closed for through traffic, something either now or in the maybe near future, we could talk to the instructor or contractors involved and possibly put some truck signs out that state, effectively, Main Street is closed, please use the bypass or whatever. I know.
They have those deterrent signs, but the trucks don't mind them. They are at, actually, there's one before you get to commercial coming in from Southbound that says.
I see that's made you sit down.
Seek an alternate route. And.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, they've done what they can. I.
I know. If it's hard, they get right here and then all of a sudden they got to turn. Our streets aren't really capable of.
Yeah, well, they have those digital signs before.
Yeah.
Where they could take the truck route.
Must not be a word.
It might be.
Anyway.
No problem.
Mayor Commissioners, I don't have anything new to report, but would be happy to see your questions.
Hey. You're off the hook.
Thanks.
I'm going to take just a moment and exercise my time. First of all, it's an honor to be up here. I have been in the past week working with or meeting with different departments. And there are, there are concerns in the city. I'm sure that's no shock to anyone in various departments. And so that, since this is the first meeting for me to sit at, I want to make sure that everybody kind of understands my goal for Livingston. And that's taking all of these concerns. As a city, I feel that the top two concerns are the top two priorities for a city are to, one, provide fresh water to its residents, and to provide sewer capabilities to our residents. To be a city, that's, these are facilities that we have to make sure we provide. All of the other items that are important to everyone sitting here, in reference to those, have to be basically a backseat. While they are important, and I just want to emphasize that whatever you choose to be important, your tap doesn't produce water when you go to use it, or when you flush your toilet, it has nowhere to go but into your floor. I think you will see that and understand those are our primary goals. Public safety, our police force, our fire department are absolutely essential to be a part of the city, and those would be the next step. We also have had a discussion with our financial director today. And of course, straightening out, understanding our financial is equally important or will be worked on with equal diligence as the first two items. But until we are able to evaluate our water and our sewage capacities and lifetimes of the existing equipment, those are going to be the priorities that I personally am working on. So while everything else that we talked about, whether it's our parks, whether it's our youth activities, whether it's our animal shelter situation, all of these are very important, and they are going to be worked on with the recognized priorities that they are. And please understand and be patient during this time. We, this will hopefully continue to be an open forum for you to have comment and bring to, bring to light items that this commission and this city needs to address. And we are certainly going to be receptive to those, and we're going to work on them. And if nothing else, get back to you very quickly on what that schedule is going to be. My personal goal is to create, or to recreate the city that I know we can be, and that's attractive and welcome and warming to new residents, and to basically make this what I remember growing up as a great place to live. I'm not saying it's a bad place to live, but we all understand that there are trash problems. There are dirt problems. There, it basically is to rebuild the morale and the pride in this city. And that's what I hope to do in the next four years. It'd be a part of all of that. I encourage everyone here that's a part of this. I encourage everyone that is listening or a part of this city to please be a voice to us and about Livingston. As I've stated, I hope to work with the commission and of course our city management and create workshops where all of the things, all of the concerns can be addressed. You're welcome, you will be welcome to come and have, provide your input. But that's the challenges that we have before us. I am reminded every day of how the new management, they are overwhelmed at this point. They are working every day to bring us up to a current understanding of where we're at and where we're going. So I want you to back them, support them. Please be here if you have something that you would like to bring before this, and I will make sure that your voice is heard. But anyway, thank you for being here this evening. And if we progress on, we invite your comments, which we now go to public comments. So anyone that would like, we don't have, I would do so. We're on silent. If you would, you have something to add, please come to the lectern and state your name and what you would like to say. Anyone? Speak now, or at least to not hold your peace? Okay, we will move on.
China and Shanghai. 25 million people, they put in a COVID lockdown.
Making sure they didn't have public comment.
Okay. All right. Non-action item. We have representatives from the American Legion. You'll come, of course, I believe they have presentations.
Mayor, Commissioner. I'm a Kinnamor captain, American Legion Post 16 commander. This is a ten-point team, the vice commander, and the most senior treasurer. We would like to give a couple of presentations out to some city workers.
Yes, please.
We'll try to make it fast.
Jason Boyston and Melissa Tice. Got to get in trouble here. First one is Melissa Tice. This certificate of appreciation is gratefully presented to Melissa Tice, the American Legion Post 68 Livingston, New Mexico. Would like to thank you for your valuable support and hard work during the three American Building Maintenance and Upkeep fundraisers in 2021. These events were a huge success, which ensured the building bills were paid during the time of financial and personal hardships caused by COVID-19. She personally organized, baked, and distributed the desserts during these events. Your willingness to give freely during our personal time off, your personal time off from work and baking and wrapping each dessert at home, along with her cooking talents, was beneficial to the success of the fundraiser. In recognition and sincere appreciation with, which contributes to the advancement of the American Legion program activities dedicated to God and country, we salute you. This one is for Jason Boyston. This certificate of appreciation gratefully presented to Jason Boyston. The American Legion Post 68 Livingston, New Mexico, would like to thank you for your valuable support and work during the three American Legion Building Maintenance and Upkeep fundraisers in 2021. These events were hugely successful, which ensured the building bills were paid during the time of financial and personal hardships of COVID-19. He personally organized the grilling and smoking, smoking of our 180 hamburgers and 90 hot dogs during this event. He used his own barbecue and his own wood to do this. Willness, your willingness to give freely during the personal time off from work and use his, I'm trying to get this wrong, wood smoker, wood and cooking talents was beneficial to the success of our fundraiser. In recognition and sincere appreciation, which contribute to the advancement of the American Legion programs and activities dedicated to God and country, we salute you. And that is the thing, and that's one thing that we love to have, is people helping the American Legion, and in turn, we help the people. Give back, they give it to us, and we give back to them and everything else. And that's what we're here for. And I know it's been a long time since American Legion has done anything in the town of working for it. We are going to be doing a whole lot more. We were in the Christmas parade for the first time in several years and stuff like that, and we're going to be even doing more and more. So, thank you, and we appreciate your, your, your.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Legion for their recognizing the employees of the city, and we appreciate what you do for our community.
Okay. I'm now looking forward to discussion of the lodger tax board position. Don't know who takes the lead. Do you like?
If I may, Mayor, we just have the one board position in which she resigned for that will go out for publishing, and if anybody's interested, they can contact City Hall. And we will vote for appointment at the next meeting, April 25th. So if you know anybody, if anybody's interested, please let me know.
Further discussion? Okay, I'm looking forward to discussion of hiring a project and systems administrator. Isn't that you?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, as you are aware, I have been conducting an assessment of all city functions. And based on that process, working with Ms. Kennedy and also with Ms. Crystal Ball, we realized that there's three things that we need here in city government. Number one, we need someone that can, we don't have an IT director. We rely on a private contractor. But we need somebody in-house to help with basic networking, computers, and so forth. We also need someone to assist with projects, road projects. Right now, we're working on the CDVG project. We're going to discuss the transportation project fund, the TPF. So we need someone to assist with projects. And we also need someone to assist finance with contracts. For example, email, everyone has a separate email. We want to centralize that and have one contract for emails. We want to have one contract that comes to our cell phones and so forth. So recently, we had a resignation in the organization. And so what we decided to, we met, and our recommendation to the commission is instead of replacing that individual, we revise the job description, and we hire someone that would help us with the specific needs that I just mentioned. At this time, if Ms. Kennedy or Ms. Ball have anything else to add, we can move forward.
We feel that we can build in some efficiencies of centralizing some of these functions. This morning, I actually printed a report for Dr. Martinez that showed how much we've spent on that SWAT. It's actually our contractor for the IT services. This individual may not be able to do away with that completely. There probably will still be some, some functions that they'll need to serve for us. But that person will be the gatekeeper of when SWAT gets called and when they don't. And if there's something that they can't handle, then they will be the ones to actually make contact. That will free up the time of our employees of having to, you know, sit on the phone with them and, and work through this problem. And it'll also probably reduce quite a bit the amount that we pay because, you know, they may even keep a running list and, and address certain issues all at one time. Because every time we pick up the phones, then we get a base charge. And that's where I think most of our, our expenses have been generated from. But as he also mentioned, we have multiple various, you know, contracts on different printers and computers around the city, and that's not the most efficient way to do it. We have, you know, we need to have somebody that's going to stay on top of turning off lines that we aren't using anymore. And, you know, just to have a centralized place to handle that. Because all of these things have gotten quite out of hand over the years, and it's going to take a little bit to get that into, you know, the baseline of, of what these expenses need to look like going forward. It's obviously not something that, that I can take on in addition to my duties. And so that was my request to Dr. Martinez, was to somehow get somebody that could provide those functions. And, you know, as you'll see in the budget workshops that we're going to be doing, my plan is to actually centralize a lot of those costs into one place so that we can actually see what the cost is versus having it scattered throughout the organization. So it's just a better way to manage our expenses and be more efficient. And, you know, losing the project inspector, I, I needed the extra eyes and stuff on projects for me. Also, this person would learn the permitting process and learn my software because anytime I'm gone, there's absolutely no one to assist citizens with the permit. So that's where we're looking at trying to get this person to kind of round it into, they'd be a very busy person, but all of us are, so.
Having looked at the job description, I commented to our city manager that this person would have to have pretty extensive knowledge. But after further discussion, they're not going to have to be experts in all of these different fields. But if you can, you know, I work on a computer and kind of understand how a product works, you might even have the ability to look at it. So I encourage anyone that's interested, please look into this. We need the help. All right, moving on. The open door to a discussion of the Fourth of July fireworks show cost and option. Is that the U Chief of Largo?
Yes, sir. Mayor, Commissioners, we have been tasked with purchasing the fireworks for the city displayed for the last probably six, seven years. This is kind of a breakdown of the two different options. Obviously, with COVID and the prices are starting to go up, the two options that they have given us is the same budget as last year, which is a significant drop in the shot count, or a, the same amount of shots that we had last year at a higher rate. And you're looking at approximately, just had it all go, but it's a, it's a pretty substantial increase, a little over $1,200, I believe. Traditionally, this has been pulled out of the water's tax to pay for this. But they have contacted me to let me know that we have to make a decision here by the end of this month to get the order in. So that's why I brought these two different proposals to the commission tonight to get y'all's take in which way y'all would like to go.
Any discussion on that? Commissioner, Chief.
Yes, sir, Mayor. I think that's one thing on our discussion of our last meeting was the lodger tax. The city is that, you know, I know the board is new on the lodger tax, but it's items like this that I was worried about, just like I stick the last, I needed a $1 at the end of that $35,000 that we spent this last meeting because of, you know, I know it's, it's clear understanding. We still got, we're still working on, on some of the issues we're having with our balance sheets. But that's what I was worried about. And when I saw that item on the agenda, I said, man, I said, this last meeting we did 30, but we did not add the fire works. And that was due to the board being a new board that lodger tax for, for one reason, and also yourself and so forth. But I think.
It actually wasn't there.
It wasn't.
It just wasn't.
Moved on.
A little bit higher. Yeah.
Yeah. So that's what I was worried about. And I think that's, I think the foresight on that would be just some items like this. I guess we've got budget early on with our budgeting that way during lodger's tax. It's already a common one. We're not having to, because we never know what was going to come in on a quarterly basis. Depending on, on the lodgers is how we earn that revenue. So something like this, that's what I was kind of worried about. But I know, but it was an understanding. We did not spend it all. We had 35, but we had additional 35 balance. Is that my correct?
Yes, that 35 included, we had done a quarterly breakdown of this amount. So I don't know exactly what those figures were, but we did have a call of each, for each quarter dedicating that even amount across the board to the fireworks display. But when Chief Lizarro approached me about it and I gave him that amount, it wasn't sufficient. Because I think it was based on the previous year's number and not the last year. And then now, of course, we've seen the additional increase.
So what is your recommendation, my answer? To proceed with the higher rate of what rates do you recommend?
We, I mean, we still do have just a little bit of a, you know, reserve in that lodger's tax. I know that there was the concern about how fast that that's going to get, you know, replenished. But we did expect this to be the high quarter, the high cost quarter for the lodger's tax. And so based on that and getting another floor put together and possibly reviewing the assessment, it could have an impact on how much we're getting in subsequent quarters for the lodger's tax. So, I mean, this is money that we had budgeted for in part. And the funding is available in the lodger's tax fund. But it could come with the, not being able to fund additional events. And I think that would be probably your decision tonight.
Sorry. I don't mean to be stringing out, but one other thing, taking into factors that how we support Main Street and Chamber. That's my other concern is replen, including the funds, you know, we still got expenditures on there as well. That's what I'm worried about as well.
Yes. And, and we're going to go over some of that on the set schedule during the finance report in addition to other expenses. And I believe in the summer months, we have the opportunity to review those professional service agreements that detail exactly what Main Street, economic development and Chamber are required as part of their contribution to that agreement of how many events that they have to provide and whatnot. So it's all going to, they come back up in that discussion in, you know, where we can kind of put numbers to it. But, I mean, if we want to go ahead and pull them with the, with the fireworks display this summer, then obviously we have to make this decision and I about the expense, the increased expense. And then maybe next year, we can do a little better job of budgeting a possible increase in anticipation.
Thank you. Would, would you feel comfortable in possibly doing an evaluation with, with the residual? And, yeah, first of all, I apologize, but I can't even see the numbers. So I don't even know how far we are apart and they're not on here. So I'm kind of lost.
It's about $2,000 difference and about 200 shots difference.
Correct.
So what's the amount of time between shots?
So the traditional shot count or the same shot count that we've had in the past, roughly 15 to 16 minute shot or display.
And that's a 644?
Yes, sir.
644. That's 15 minute show. So you take off 200 of that, you've got maybe less than 10. It's depend on how happy someone gets or somebody misses count. So, yeah. So, I mean, I saw fireworks in my neighborhood that lasted longer than loving to deal with it. So, I mean, just to compete with the local residents, you nearly have to go the other way, whether we can, you know, whether it's a good decision or not.
Well, I mean, keeping in mind too, what we're going to allow residents to be able to, to shoot off this summer basically the drought proclamation too. So that's something to keep in mind as well. But I will actually, by the end of this month, have to do a lodger's tax audit for the state. They have given me the deadline of April 30th. So I will have better data for the lodger's tax, the fund and, and what I feel like should be replenished or later on. But I don't know that that helps with, with this decision and I.
Do we still do the personal donations like we used to do in the past?
Yeah.
Where it needs to be reversed?
Your decision has to be, needs to be made by when?
I have to submit whichever one. They'll submit a contract by the end of this month. So not, if, if anything else, the last, the last minute will be next commission.
Next commission.
Yes, sir.
Do we want to put an action? So that's a, we'll add that as an act to the next commission meeting. Hopefully by the end, a little bit better. I, if we need to, I think we could call some special needs lodger tax and get that approved. $2,000 in the overall amount of things is not a huge gift to that fund. But we hopefully will be better prepared next year. Thank you. Any further discussion on the site? All right. Open forward discussion and identification of road projects. Please, that's you, Ms. Paul.
Yes. So I'm looking to, working with the city manager, we're looking to do a grant for NMDOT. We're looking at doing some slurry, which is the microsurrey, which is what they did in 2019. They did several areas. So I picked out some roads that are not, because you have to look at the road and the condition it's in. If it's too bad, the slurry is not going to help extend the life of it. So I looked at some roadways that were able to be micro-silled. And the cost of that, just to do the areas that I've highlighted, the cost would be approximately the 250,000. And then, of course, the city map 5% would be the 12. We are going to put in for a hardship when we've offered this grant funding. So hopefully we won't have to pay that match or not the whole 5%. So if commission has any other streets, and you guys can email me and I can give you the exact streets, block from block, what these are, because I know the map is small. If you have any other street that you feel would need this, please let me know. Because I do have to submit this to NMDOT by Friday.
Friday, Thursday?
Is it Thursday before?
We have to submit it in application to indicate what are, what roads.
What we wanted.
It's not the full application, but we, it's the start of the process.
So we have a couple of days to evaluate whether there's any candidates for this and then add those to the list. Approximately, how many linear B road are we looking at?
Okay, so when you break these down, you have to do square footage into yardage to get the cost of those contracts. So I had East Street and I had that being, East Street being from Polk all the way down to Central. And then, of course, it's broken up because the judicial system. And then there's a little section of East Street between the judicial system and Avenue A. And then there's another little piece of East Street from C to D. I have that as square yards or square feet? I mean, square feet is 143,676 square feet for that one strip. So no, I did not do linear because I was too busy trying to break it down in what I had to have for cost evaluation and the product.
Well, that kind of gives us an idea.
Yeah.
Just for that segment, then I would say approximately four times that are.
Yeah, you're looking at the total cost for all those are kind of highlighted. The total square yardage was 70, 70,741 square yards.
It was over three. On square yards.
Yes.
All right.
The next part of this application, we want to do some maintenance on a couple of them that were actually in more need than microseal would help. So on these projects, these few roads right here, we're looking up North Main above the hospital. We're looking at doing a mill and overlay. All right. So this would be North Main, an area of West Avenue J that has really been deteriorated by broken water pipes in the area, some drainage in the area that we have recently took care of the problems and the drainage and the broken pipes. So we hope those leaks quit happening.
Is that approximately at the?
Between fifth and seventh. Yes.
Okay.
Yes. That is where it is at. And then I have East Central Avenue from basically Love Street over to the commercial, the fairhouse. That road, you know, they repaired it in front of the theater. They repaired it in front of the judicial system. And then the rest of Central there is just kind of really in that shape. So, and that is a major thoroughfare that people use, used quite a bit, especially with the judicial system opening there. That building opening up has used, that road gets used quite a bit more. They also have E70K. E70K, once you turn off Love Street is like being on a dirt road. It needs, it may take more than the mill and overlay. But we can do the process we have done on Jackson, which costs the same as a mill and overlay, where they take up the base and reload the base and the top. So we have that project looking at requesting 759. And of course, our map would be in the 30, well, almost 40. But again, we'll apply for that partnership.
As in the Jackson?
The Jackson project was originally a mill and overlay. When you come to a mill and overlay, you start looking, because this is just a request. But when you get the money and you actually look at a project and you get an engineer to take a core sample and stuff like that, you realize you can't do the mill and overlay. But then you could come up with this other process called BOMAG. And it's where they take all of that material and reprocess it to build you a better road that'll last 10 to 15 years.
My question was, as in the Jackson project, when you, when you come upon a, say, an area of like this, we, we do a core sample and then all of a sudden we have clay or we have something underneath that's not suitable. So now we have to go ahead and BOMAG that, clear that, do the excavation, replenish that, pack and then go back. What is the contingency on a project like that? I'm sure that you, you meet with the state and you come to a change order agreement and go from there. Is that?
If there is any change orders in a grant proceeding project, we would take on the cost. Now, like in the Jackson with the clay we have hit, I had enough money in the budget for a buffer for this type of activity to happen. That is what I've done here.
Same contingency type process. Okay. That was where I was headed with this.
I try to make sure we're not going over budget and have the money to actually do these projects.
Andy?
Go ahead.
Ryan, you're ready.
Then the other one is we need to get design to do some streets that are actually dirt roads. They're clean, within city limits that people actually live on. So we have northeast or North Eddie Street that runs up to Polk. And then from, of course, Eddie over to Polk, that is dirt road. We would not have to build out the Polk part if we did not want to. Because the only residents, of course, they're on actually, but those are lots that could be developed into homes. And then we have our South and North Chavis. So this is right here between Central and, I mean, Washington and A. And there are homes on those lots. And yeah, it's a dirt road. I really, getting the design to fix those areas in our city is something that we need to do. Once you get a design, then the next year, we would be able to go out to grants, actually do the test.
Any discussion? Any questions?
Yes.
East Earl? Okay, East Avenue Har. Okay, that is one that we could probably do to design because that road is in poor condition too.
Yes.
Now, let me ask you this, because I know the trade and crafts from there. Who's responsible for their railway?
The actually New Mexico Railroad. Yes.
So, aren't they supposed, isn't there something in there that they should keep their railway in good condition? It's a process.
Yeah, I don't even drive down.
Exactly. So, can't we do something about that?
Yeah.
Get them guys coming?
Yeah. I'm just gonna pull up and give them a call, see what they say. I think having at least some kind of report from us about the condition of it and the hazards for crossing over that, I think are going to be helpful. So that when we call the railroad on the phone, I'm sure they get calls every single day about crossings. But if we've got some information from like an engineer or someone else that looks at it and gives us the facts on it, that'll put us in a little bit different position.
If you go over that intersection, one or three miles an hour, you're left, that's all the obstacles on your vehicle.
Yeah.
It's a horse shit.
In addition, that is a major truck, semi truck thoroughfare connecting our truck route with Arkansas Junction. And I know, anyway, I'm sure that we're going to further need that improvement in the near future. I do know.
I can add that to the.
That the railroad is difficult because they really want you to say, fix it or pull it up. But that is the only access of the railroad into our city. So pushing them is difficult, but.
But like I said, there should be something that as far as upkeeping the railway, absolutely, in their net.
We all agree. No more than they are on South Lake, that, that particular, so.
Yeah, I know on Avenue K, it took Wyatt a long time to get the railroad to fix that Avenue K because it's horrible. And it did finally get fixed, but it was, it was a lot of work to get that done. Anything?
Just want to make one comment. Crystal, I think you're doing an outstanding job. You've done a lot of tasks about eight months ago. I want to say you're doing an outstanding job. I like what I see. I like the work and I really appreciate the energy as a commissioner. Seeing you step in that position and I just want to say you're doing an outstanding job. Thank you. It's just, we should appreciate it.
Anything further?
No.
All right. Any discussion, further discussion, any questions? If not, we'll move from non-action to action items. I'll entertain a motion on a resolution 2022 dash 034. Mr. Mayor, may I?
Absolutely. I would just entertain a motion and allow us to read that to you for the motion we're making. It makes it run a little smoother.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
I'm making a motion for resolution 2022 dash 034, appointing a commissioner to Lee County Solid Waste Authority.
Second. I have a motion in second. Resolution?
Yeah, we have an end.
It's from the commission itself. Whoever would want to serve out of you.
I'd like to amend my resolution to approve Commissioner Ball to Lee County Solid Waste Authority.
Second. I have a motion in second to appoint Commissioner Ball to this board. Any discussion? If not, a roll call over. If not, roll call vote.
Commissioner Trivio?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Bo?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
I'm not entertaining a motion. Sorry.
Since it's basically the same thing, can we have a private discussion? Is there anyone on the board that would like to serve under Parks and Recs? Before we make the motion, so we got to go back and remake the motion? Is there any volunteers on the board?
I am good with this.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh thirty-one, approval of appointing Commissioner Liz White to the Parks and Rec Board.
Motion in second to appoint Ms. White, Mrs. White, to the Parks and Rec Board. Any further discussion? Not roll call vote.
Commissioner Trivio?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Bo?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Okay. In the same manner, would anybody? All right, this is the appointment, so it's a little, so we entertain the motion.
So usually in the past, the mayor occupied this position. So you want to, you can, but.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution for twenty twenty-two dash oh thirty-six. Approval of appointment of Mayor Robbie Roberts to the Lee County Community Improvement Corporation. Okay, motion in second to appoint me as that representative. Any discussion? Having done, roll call vote.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Bo?
Yes.
Commissioner Trivio?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Move back to a note.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero three seven, approval to advertise ordinance five nine hundred, chapter thirteen point oh seven and ordinance creating regulations for water conservation, water restriction and wastewater.
Second. I have a motion in second on resolution twenty, appointing two dash thirty-seven. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, during some recent conversations, I come across a few people that had experience with Midland and different places like that, where they impose these water restrictions. And they actually saw two different situations happen. Was that people either overwatered and they had more consumption or they absolutely quit watering altogether and their community appearance went from nice to horrendous. So by looking at some of this, we may want to really look at this again before we hash out these things and, you know, put this in place. Because the question would be is which way do you want your community to go? The few people that are watering in their yards, now they're like, they're overwatering their yard or not watering their yard at all. So we're torn between that. And then you also have a cannabis debate where now you have, you're regulating that water to someone who's watering their yard, trying to keep their community, giving that water to a business now planning, you know, growing different things inside of the community. So I'm, I'm kind of torn. I'm kind of actually in the voting, no mold of this. So, um, that was just some discussions I'd had with some people. So I just thought I'd throw that on the table.
Anybody else?
Because we're just advertising, can we, can address or something for people to send in their little stories or comments on it and leave it open for a little bit before we decide? Because I have had a few people call me and say, I don't want to water it for the morning and things like that. And so, I mean, just, just leave it open for public comment for such a time until we get everyone's real fill on it and then move forward that front of our advertising.
So, so if I may, um, the point to advertise would be to allow them to go ahead and make sure to come in and have any questions or, um, address anything. And that way, when we vote at the May meeting, it won't be the April twenty-fifth, it'll be the May, the first meeting. There's any feedback, we would provide it to you guys. If you want to approve, you can. If you want to table, you can. I can get.
So it's a little more accessible.
Yeah.
In a discussion with the city manager today, this was one of our topics. And I, uh, like Commissioner Gandy had, uh, mixed feelings on this. Uh, so it was in a, in an agreement between he and I that before we tried to, uh, put this to a resolution that we have a little bit more knowledge and that would be what is our water capacity? What can we provide? What is our water consumption? And where is a lot of that going? So my question to him is, in this advertising, just like Mr. White said, do we want to put it out there for public comment? And then take that knowing that probably are going to, uh, rewrite this in which we would then have to republizize and, uh, I guess maybe not take further comment, but at least let know, let everyone know what the final, uh, adoption document would be. Uh, or do we want to bring it back, review it, put it forth for public comment? And then that way we don't have two publications of it. So in our discussion, having not come to a final best way of doing this, that was what brought about, uh, a study for the consumption of water. So there are various points of this particular ordinance that are going to bring forth disagreement from the, uh, public. And my personal comment to him was, no matter what we do or when we, uh, when we present this, the city should lead in, uh, the conservation. And one of my discussions is for several months and or years, the city has had several leaks that have contributed to wasting of water or watering the asphalt, uh, or concrete as it was. So, uh, you know, in order for us as a city to ask the citizens to, to basically buy into this particular resolution, I feel like we need to be the lead on it. So in our discussion, um, it, it, it was brought up, table it, uh, look at it again, or at least if we're going to go to public comment, understand that this is not going to automatically be put, uh, to a vote and, uh, in the, any of the May, uh, meetings and that we probably will republizize this again. So, um, any further discussion?
It's basically a mirror of Hobbs, right? So the public comment would kind of help us shape it into our own. You know, we could ex-nay some of theirs and, you know, we did really get to know what everyone wanted to say.
I would, I would recommend, and I agree with, with Commissioner White, but I would recommend table it because if we're going to pay for analysis, so let me come in and do an analysis of costs five to ten thousand. That'd be all of this total, total ordinance in a whole different direction. Uh, so maybe we should table it till after we get the feedback from where we contract to get this. And maybe that would help us make a better sound decision on this resolution. And that could be nine, nine days. I don't think nine days have hurt, hurt much, but at least we'll have something solid and that, that would be my.
But I would say, go ahead and vote no against it. We can bring it back. Because with the table, you need to bring it back at a certain amount of time. This way it gives us a more open window. We're not forced to have to come back in May or June or something like that. The, the, the valuation may take longer. So I would just say, you know, it's just that advertisement. Let's go ahead and cancel that out. We can do some more research. Public comment, whatever you guys want to do there. But, and then once we have a better plan, then move forward with that.
Any further discussion? Okay. I have a motion in second to, uh, approve the, uh, advertisement of ordinance five ninety-one. Shannon, roll call vote.
Commissioner Bo?
No.
Commissioner White?
No.
Commissioner Gandy?
No.
Commissioner Trivio?
No.
Mayor Roberts?
No.
I'd like to thank Commissioner Gandy for bringing that to light. Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh thirty-eight, approval of grant agreement between the city and New Mexico Environmental Department for downtown water line replacement. Second. That motion in second on, uh, resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero three eight. Any discussion? Thank you. I wasn't sure. I was trying to find it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, this is a, an agreement through the New Mexico Environment Department. And it's for a total of, this is the eight, eight hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and seven thousand six hundred and twenty-nine. Now, what we need to do is we need to have the commission pass a resolution. Once the commission passes the resolution, the resolution and the grant agreement will be sent to the environmental department, indicating that we are in agreement to move forward with this project.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. I have a question. Uh, now, this is going to be a new grant? Crystal?
No, this, this is not a new grant. This should have been, once the state approved this, we should have brought it immediately in for a resolution. I did not know this had not happened and neither did I. We weren't aware that this had not been resolved.
Okay. Want to make sure that.
I think, uh, to elaborate on that, everyone, over all the emails that the management, everybody else was assigned. I, I forwarded all the emails from District One to two, pardon, three part images you'd say. I, I never got a city manager's, uh, emails or nothing like that. So they were scanning through it. They found that.
I was working with the grant that we originally had for the downtown water line.
That's what this is. This is.
This is the original. We never, because I, it was, I know we had that, supposed to have the one we're going to be presented.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Ball, is there any penalty, anything that will incur from the, the time lapse or?
Uh, not that we have been told.
Okay. Any further information?
First, once the commission approves the resolution, we will submit this to the environmental department and then they will notify us to let us know what's going to be the next step in allocating the funds to the mainstream.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay. I have a motion in a second for the approval of this, uh, grant agreement. Shannon, roll call vote please.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Trivio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bo?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh thirty-nine, approval of grant agreement between the city and New Mexico Environment Department for municipal, I was reading the same ones, municipal water tower design. Second. I have a motion in a second on resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero three nine. Any discussion?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, this grant is similar to the previous one. Uh, this is for seventy thousand dollars to plan, design, construct, purchase and equip a water tower in the northwest of Lovington in Lee County. We plan to use this seventy thousand dollars for architectural design. And again, once the commission approves the resolution, we will submit the resolution and the grant agreement to the environmental department for their. Uh, Mr. Chief, any comments on this one? I know this was specifically for a water tower that would address the fire department. I am still reading it so far.
Yes, uh, this was to increase storage, um, to the low, to our local system. The planned, uh, area for this proposed water tower is behind our new station, um, right off the matter.
We have a motion in second for this, the approval of this resolution. Any further discussion? Not roll call vote please.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Trivio?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Bo?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Your financial report, Miss Kennedy? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a financial report.
Thank you, sir. I'm working.
Thank you, sir. I was off in the la la land, sorry about that. I have a motion in second, presentation of the financial report. Any further discussion? Roll up the paper, roll call?
Nope. Oh, no.
Sometimes we talk about it. Sometimes we look at the bills. I usually ask questions if it's over five thousand dollars. If it's less than five thousand dollars.
Oh. You probably noticed the three hundred. Uh, wait a minute, it was on page seven, uh, ten, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Um, that's actually two months worth. I received a email from Waste Management that the January payment hasn't been made. Um, so that is, um, it breaks, our system breaks down into four different transactions here, but it's actually the, the seventy-five, seventy-eight thousand transactions. Our, our residential, um, roll-offs, you know, the smaller dumpsters. And then the two larger ones, the eighty-five and the eighty-eight are for the large, uh, roll-off containers that are located at our solid waste site. And so with the, um, county taking over that, they will be taking over those, uh, larger roll-offs in addition. Um, I have requested with Waste Management, a meeting to actually go over the invoices. They're not very detailed. They just have a count. And I would like them to be able to justify what those charges are for. So, but I don't, uh, foresee that in the, in the very near future, uh, but it is something that I need to get to, um, to analyze these Waste Management invoices and find out what the expenses are. And then also more importantly, to make sure that our, uh, collections for the solid waste in through the utility bills are sufficient to cover our expenses here. So something else that's on my to-do list, but I just wanted to, to address that large amount.
In a discussion with, uh, the financial director today, uh, she also mentioned that she already, she believed that she has uncovered that the city, uh, has been, uh, charging and paying for, uh, the, uh, roll-offs or the dumpsters out of hospital, but, uh, Waste Management also chose to be charging you. And since the financial director and right hand is here, I believe she's going to get with you and see if that's accurate, so that Waste Management ends up lifting off of our community. So.
Yes, they, Waste Management would owe a, a credit back to the wellness center. Um, but I think there was a question whether there's actually two dumpsters there. So we need to get that straightened out and I am in contact with, um, Paulson about that. So we will give an answer back to them. Um, fortunately, they were the one that brought us, brought it to our attention. So I guess they're on top of something. So, um, but when I, when I do an actual sit-down with them, I make sure that there's not something else out there that has gone unaccounted for or it, at first glance, it looks like they're charging us for quite a few, um, dumps up to six and seven times a week. And I don't know that that's accurate. I don't know that that's even happening. So, uh, based on Bernardo and his input, he does feel that that's accurate. So, uh, this is just another one of those vendors that over the years has kind of compiled itself. So it needs to be looked at and to make sure that it's the most efficient charge and that we're not overpaying. But if there's no other questions about the expense report, um, I can go over the debt schedule in. But if there's no other questions about the expense report, I can go over the debt schedule in detail with you. Oh, well, I do want to say one more thing about the expense report. The city manager, I and Shannon actually met recently. Our goal is to reduce our credit cards down to a total of three. We have about sixteen or seventeen at this time, and that's actually down from what we had when I first arrived, because we had credit cards that belonged to ex-employees that were still out there that I had shut off, caused us quite a headache when it came to business, for example. So, I'm going to have to phase these out and make sure that we don't have any auto-payments that need to come off these cards, but that's not the ideal way to handle it in the first place, because it's utilizing our credit when it should be put on the accounts payable side. And so, we're going to try to, again, be more efficient with our cards and just get those limits way up and stop utilizing them for so many different things. That way, we can have the cards available for more necessary charges. So, that's another big project that I've got ahead of me, but eventually, we'll be able to get to that point.
Ms. Kennedy, along that note, in our, in Mr. White and I's training for the end of last week, it was brought up that any processors have to be approved by the DFA. So, I know you are consolidating, but you better, when you end up with your decisions, you need to run that and make sure that they're on your approved list. And actually, they just discovered that as a, the DFA itself just discovered that that was a law that was passed, and they were unaware of it, so it was new to them, and obviously haven't reached out, so anyway.
Is that maybe on the merchant?
On the merchant.
Service, okay, yeah.
The way they understood, the way we understood it, they didn't give us a lot of detail, so, but not on the, not on the these are part number or whatever.
Okay, yes, another project to work on. We now have a total of five merchant service vendors, because, you know, we have a different vendor for ten foot away from each other. Again, not the most efficient way to do it. We pay separate fees for separate vendors, we pay non-use fees, interchange fees. All that needs to be analyzed to determine what the cheapest route is, and more importantly, the most efficient one, because that's been giving my girls the most bits when it comes to reconciliating accounts, is the way that those merchant cars hit and the cut-off time, so. Yes. But I'm glad you brought that up, because I'll have to make sure to, to make sure of those vendors that we're looking at, that they can be on the approved list.
Any further discussion? Any questions?
Okay, so, I have given you an Excel, I gave you a printout too, I apologize, it's small. Lots of data, I was trying to condense it as much as possible, but you'll notice that there's two sheets that, if you put them together like this, they reach great across. This, this third sheet right here on the back, this is just the detail of the actual transaction or date of each one of these, each one of these contingent, I'm calling it contingent debt. So, the first, the first part of this table that I have labeled as contractual debt, these are to the NMFA, the New Mexico Finance Authority. The second little section is to paid-off debt that were recently, as in March eleventh, was the date that those were paid off and refinanced under, actually, the PPRF five-six-nine-seven. It's the one that paid off the magistrate court PPRF five thousand and sixteen, and then the county-state bond was paid off by the PPRF five-six-nine-nine. The last section of this table, I'm calling it contingent debt, there may be not necessarily contingents, but I just felt like they needed to be presented in this fashion on this spreadsheet. And so, if you want to just kind of look across the columns on the top, that's the more substantial debt. Original total balance is approximately eighteen point nine million. Principal debt balance is now at sixteen and a half million. You'll see that there's a debt service account and a debt service reserve. There's two figures there. Those figures are based on what the NMFA was requiring us to hold for debt service or, you know, reserves and stuff, so of course, that's money that is absolutely not accessible to us. It's accessible to the NMFA, but we did have to fund it at initial closing, and that is held separately, but the balances that you see there were actually financed. And so, it wasn't necessarily an injection that we had to open an account with, but proceeds were used to fund those accounts. A closing date, a maturity date, the average payment per month. It was necessary because of the way that these debt schedules are presented. They are not fixed rates, they're blended rates, and they adjust on the different payment terms, whether it's annually, quarterly, monthly even. So, I felt like that average payment per month column was important to just kind of give us an idea of what, what, you know, we're looking at on a month-to-month basis. So, a total on just our contractual debt is a hundred and six thousand, average per month. None of our NMFA's are based on quarterly payments. The next column is the maximum payments per year, so that equals almost, well, almost one point four million maximum payments per year. And then, we do have a past due balance of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, the majority of which is on the water system improvements. The invoices that I was looking at, the statements I was looking at, they continue to carry those past dues over, and they were generated quite a while back. So, we haven't caught up on those. That would be in addition, by the way, to any of our contractual debt payments to get the past dues paid off. The next column is the rate. This was my best attempt at backing into the numbers to determine a blended rate. They apparently aren't required to disclose interest rates in the way that I'm used to. In traditional banking, we have to be very specific about what your rate is and disclose that. You know, forthcoming, forthcoming, transparent. What the rates are is very complicated to look at these bond debt schedules and try to determine what that number is. So, I just did a debt or a reverse amortization, basically, to determine what that rate is. But I ended up coming within a thousand dollars of each figure. So, the annual max principal is the actual, the max payment per year plus the annual max interest per year. So, annual max principal we're paying is about one point three. Maximum interest we pay per year on these five is four hundred and three thousand. The total principal that we'll pay is, of course, the same as the original balance, eighteen point eight-eight-seven million. The total interest we will have paid, if we term out all of these debts, will be six point nine million. So, for a total repayment, principal plus interest of twenty-six point three million. The next column outlines the fees that were paid at closing, that, of course, came from loan proceeds that were rolled in. And so, something to keep in mind is when the fees aren't paid upfront, they are financed, and we pay, in addition to fees, we pay interest. That interest number's not reflected in that column, but it would be reflected in the total interest column. And then finally, the last one is the repayment source. So, the first loan is the DW two thousand and eighteen, which was done for water system improvement. That's paid by a wire and an ACH, and that is paid on a monthly, monthly payment, average of sixteen thousand a month. We have three GRT intercepts that are outlined in our ordinances, they're numbered there. These are intercept payments that are provided by NMFA to the state, the Treasury Department, and they actually capture those amounts prior to us getting our gross receipts income. So, when we look at our gross receipts, it's important to make sure that you're looking at the number after the intercept payment. We need to consider that payment, that's money that's on that we don't see. I still have to account for it in our software, which is another project that I need to catch up on, because those payments have not been, you know, allocated correctly, and so I need to go back and do that. And then finally, the magistrate court, which is the PPRF five-six-nine-seven. That payment is going to be generated upon the term by the AOC, Administrative Office of the Courts. So, when we have a tenant, our lease agreement covers our payment, our debt service. It also covers some additional costs for maintenance of the building, supplies. We can talk a little while back about the janitorial service for that building, so that is included in our lease agreement with AOC. So, once the building is up and occupied, we will have a income, a revenue, to offset the payment, plus just a little bit. The concerning part, and the part that I have not gotten a straightforward answer from anybody as of yet, is what the plan was for the interest only during the construction term. So, we have a two-year interest only term set up for this. We, uh, are, actually, they, when they financed this and closed it on the eleventh, they capitalized the interest that was due to a balance on the previous loan, which was six million three, or six, six million three hundred thousand. And it's actually that first paid-off debt, PPRF five oh one six. So, we did have a balance on that. I don't know exactly what happened in the construction, but it never got off the ground, and so we ended up refinancing it after our two years expired, but they did take that interest and roll it into this. So, we automatically started out with a balance on this new loan, in addition to the fees that we paid upfront. And in addition to, we had to make immediately upon closing, we had to make a three hundred thousand dollar advance to the contractor and a hundred thousand dollar to the architect. And they hadn't been paid, well, the architect hadn't been paid back to July. And so, they were, you know, they were good and didn't look too bad, but they haven't been paid.
But that's far mistaken.
Yes, well, because they were trying to do the refinance. And NMFA was adamant that I not pay those and get reimbursed. It was going to be too much of a headache to do a reimbursement to us. And so, you know, like I said, they were patient and waiting for the closing. That, you know, was initially, I think, planned for December, but it did happen in March. And so, we now have a balance on that loan. It shows here that our balance is one point nine, and that's going to go up probably by approximately half a million in the next couple of months, because I've got another advance request from Bradbury Sandwich, the contractor. So, the invoice that I received for the interest-only portion of that loan was twenty-five thousand for this month, and is due actually in a couple of days. So, that's a concern. That interest only is only going to go up on a month-to-month basis until we have a tenant that's going to be paying the lease. By those, by that map, we won't ever recuperate the interest that we paid during the construction term. There's just not enough over and above the lease agreement to pay for that interest. So, I'm still trying to, to get kind of a straightforward answer from the bond attorney, from the Brad gentleman disciple, to try to explain to me if that was something that was overlooked, or if it was intended that way. I really don't know. Inputting the debt schedule together is very challenging. I, out of all of these loans, I only have one set of documents. All the other ones, I was not able to find. I did have to go to the NMFA and request those documents. And so, it started out with kind of a little bit of investigation to put this debt schedule together. I won't go into too much detail about the contingency debt. As you can see, we've got multiple EDCs that are through either ordinances for the facade and infrastructure. We have the participation with the cheese plant that I've outlined here, and then the professional service agreements, as I mentioned before, that are, I guess, negotiated on an annual basis during the summertime months. And then also, I have put the Norby Wellness debt on here. I do have an invoice that needs to get paid for a hundred thousand, and that was to pay interiors for the months that COVID was limiting their operations. And so, we did get a reduction in those costs. Allison provided me a detailed spreadsheet for that. Everything looks good. She even provided a, a cover sheet that's very informative, brought me up to see what the agreement was for that, and then, of course, included a copy of the original contract. So, that's a operating cost up to... I put a maximum here on that. It's up to a maximum payment per month of thirty-seven, or ninety-three, seven-five. So, that calculates to payment per quarter, thirty-five thousand, payment per year, three hundred... Oh, no, these are added up, hundred and twelve-five, that's one per year. And so, I did list the eighty-seven-six as past due, and then the additional balance is for the current, most current. So, what I've done is I've just added up the, the top columns, so that you can see a total. And then, I've done the same with the bottom ones, the middle rows are kind of in the point as of now, because they've been paid off, refinanced with these additionals. So, I will try to answer any questions.
Any questions? I have one on the interest that is accumulating during the construction phase. Okay, is, is it treated as a line of credit, so that as we draw on, or as we are drawing against the construction, that interest is going to continue to go up? Or did they treat it as, we're going to give you six million dollars, and we're going to charge you interest from day one, and that's going to be a stick? Or do you?
Yes, because I have been invoiced, and it is due and payable on the fifteenth. So, I do have to pay the twenty-five thousand. do have to pay the 25,000. I reached out to AOC to find out if there was something that had been negotiated during the construction. He said no, he only comes in as a tenant. Like I said, I've tried to reach out to bond attorney, I've tried to reach out to Brad cycle, have not heard back. I think they recognized that I have caught on and so they're trying to avoid it for that question. But I even asked the NMFA if we could use the, the amount that they had put in the reserve. There's the debt service account and the debt service reserve. I asked NMFA if we could use those dedicated funds for interest during the construction and the answer was absolutely not. That's under their control and they would only access those funds should we default.
So in your, what was the 25,000? I know what she said would be due in a couple of days?
Yes.
So that's going to be a monthly charge until the construction phase is complete?
Yes. Monthly charge will be obviously increasing by the month. I can sort of put together what I think might be a projected interest for subsequent months. It won't be, you know, completely accurate by any means, but it'll give us some sort of idea for planning. And then it will be in our best interest to have that building done as soon as possible, get a certificate of occupancy, get our tenants in there and start generating revenues to offset this debt.
Okay. So it is based upon the advanced, if we're going into construction and we are providing draws to them, then if the interest is based on those draws, it's an accumulation?
Yes. It's not like a bigger interest of the full deal. No. And, and what, you know, what made it, you know, large in the beginning was because of financing the fees, because of capitalizing the interest, which by the way, is not legal in traditional financing of any, of any kind. But generally you're required to bring interest current. So you don't charge interest on interest. That's not the case here. So, and I specifically asked that question when Brad was here. And it isn't, it apparently is allowed. So in government financing. But yes, that, that in addition to the amount that we were required to fund to the reserve account, which we have no access to, we're paying interest on all of those things. And now as the advances are made, we'll be paying interest on those. I, the biggest question that came up in my mind as I was looking at was how the million-dollar magistrate court building turned into an eight million dollar loan. I don't necessarily have a good answer for that because they do not give a good breakdown of use of proceeds in their, in their documentation. So that's going to take probably an additional conversation to have Brad try to explain to me how that came about. But I mean, his exact words were, you know, was there was nothing we could do because the loan was a done deal and it was, it was refinanced. And so.
But you're still saying that the lease agreement is still paying for the note? It's not coming out of general?
It will, it will come out of the general fund until we actually start receiving the lease payment. Yeah.
And then the lease payment still won't cover the money you lost?
No.
Yeah. There's a little bit, I think, I think it's about $7,000 on a month-to-month basis above the debt service, but that's to cover our operating costs. So they did actually put that in. I have, there's two different lease agreements because when we had the $6 million loan financed, the, the lease agreement was based on that debt plus a little bit of operating. And when we had to refinance the debt, the lease agreement was renegotiated to increase for the debt increase. But, you know, that's a, I think it's a 30-year?
30.
Yeah, a 30-year term. So I don't see that even over 30 years that will recoup our interest, that we'll be paying for the construction. So like I said, it's going to be in our best interest that, that we don't have any hiccups on this construction and that it gets up and running so that we can get our tenants. So, and why do we have two past dues on our commercials? They, while they were trying to do the refinancing, that's what, that's what caused this $8,000 pass due on the magistrate court. I don't know where the 129,000 pass due was coming from. That's on an existing water system improvement that was closed in 2008. So it's our oldest debt on here. And I really need to see if I can't find where those, where, where that has to start it. Because as far back as I've been able to find the statements, it's been on there and they just continue to roll it, roll it, roll it. So, you know, the good thing is we aren't paying interest on that amount because it is, it's, it's a traditional pass due. But that'll have to be paid off at the conclusion of the loan, which we owe 1.9 on that loan.
How are we doing our reserves? I'm sorry, I see that we have four of them. The other for our water system improvement is zero. So.
Yes.
How are we doing? Because I believe we are supposed to have a certain balance in that.
They, they did not require, for whatever reason, they did require a debt service account for that loan back in 2008, but they did require a debt service reserve. And so that's not something we had to fund with proceeds. But all of the other ones, the NMFA did require not only to have the debt service account, but a debt service reserve. It seems a little repetitive to me, redundant to have two different accounts set aside for that. But I'm sure it's based on a percentage, percentage of the loan balance maybe?
Well, we are, well, we need to have.
Yes. And that reserve account is the, where I got these numbers from, I matched them both with our original closing document and also verified with the current statement. So that amount has been, you know, it was set aside at closing and it has been maintained as that amount. So they do, they do notify us of the balance in there, but they don't, we don't have any control over it. But at least if that reserve account were to drop, we would know about it from the statements. And I'm sure they would also let us know about it if they had to use.
Right. Because I believe if we have reserves, we don't have to, we're going to be penalized for that.
Probably. I'd have to go back and read the loan agreement for that in that section to see what, what that might mean. But like I said, it's, it's not in our control. If we were to get delinquent on the loans, then they would also set half due penalties, probably reserve penalties if they had to dip into that account. So it's not something we want to, we want to try and, and test. But the, the main thing to remember about these NMFA accounts is they're going to get paid because they have the intercept agreements with the state treasury department. So, you know, they, they will get their money. They also set it up with AOC that we had to provide them with a check. So they will be debiting our general operating account every month for the lease payment. And then it'll be up to us to make sure that we're collecting those leases from AOC.
I did a quick calculation and I just want to make sure I'm right on this. You did a backend interest rate of 3.44 on this particular project. Originally did 6 million as an amount and then I counted to the amount of 8 million, the original balance. And if you do a, just an interest calculation on that, that effectively works out to about 23,000, maybe 23, a little over 23,000. So I think they're charging you on the full amount and that's going to be a stay instead of it's going to continue to go up. So I was getting a little freaked out.
That would be good to.
Well.
Yes.
Exactly. Because if we're only at 1. something million so far and they're charging us 25, when we get to six, we're at least three to four times that. And now we're talking 100,000 just on this. But if we're only charging us interest and that should be all that they're charging and no principal amount, then I think we're set at the, at the rate that we are currently getting. So, or charging. Now, I asked that you look into that. That was simply right off the top of my head. So.
And I, that was something that I had discussed with Dr. Martinez when I first discovered that was how to put it on a calendar to determine what our possible, our potential debt service was going to be for, for subsequent months. Getting that one invoice was a complete surprise to me. So I, you know, just immediately started trying to find out whose responsibility that was.
On construction, you just pay interest until like you have a home built and then.
Yes. That, that is how it'd be done traditionally. It is. I just, in reading the documents and of course going back and reading them after I received the statement, that is not made clear in the documents. But that's just another thing that was not made clear in the documentation, which by the way, didn't give me much time to review. They gave me two days to review the documents and, you know, dispersed it around for all the signatures. So I, you know, did have a discussion with Brad about that and kind of voiced my, you know, protest, but that's all it is, is a protest. And so this is a clear picture of what it's going to be going forward. But yes, I will, we'll certainly find out from the NMFA if they can give me an idea of what that interest payment is going to be on a month-to-month basis for budget purposes. You know, because like I said, this, the source is going to be general fund revenues up until such time that we have the, the tenants.
We call for the vote?
Thank you.
Wait, are we, I'm sorry, are we at the end of your presentation?
Yes, I am done.
I don't care if we're at the end or not.
Brad, very much. I like to, I like to point something out real quick. Like I know these discussions are lengthy and I know people get impatient, but I appreciate what you do because you're auditing, you're getting the fact, you're bringing us the facts, getting the numbers right. That's the only way we're going to make good sound decisions. So it takes a little time. I'm okay. So I just want to say I appreciate.
Well, and Commissioner Bull did request this specifically. It was one of my projects that I've actually started before. So I worked on it last week. It took me four days. But luckily it is something that I needed because I needed to know what these debt service payments were going to be for the budget. So a lot of these things that I'm working on, you know, I'm getting multiple birds with single stones. And so, you know, eventually I will have to look at all of this. It's just trying to, trying to prioritize what comes first and second, third. But I, I realize that as commissioners, you've probably never been granted the opportunity to see all this on a single piece of paper and to see a total in this manner. And so, you know, it's, it's, it makes it a little bit hard to digest when you see it this way, but it's realistic. So.
Again, you are very much appreciated. Appreciate it and look forward to getting together for some budget meetings that we need to do that. So we can sit down and get some good figures together. Appreciate that.
Dr. Martinez?
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, it is critical when we set up our work sessions to discuss budget. We will get into specifics. We're looking at, we'll have breaks, Commissioner. We'll have breaks.
Just so, just so you know, in Lovington, in 30 minutes, there's not another restaurant open. My wife does not cook. So.
Also does not cook.
Yeah. So Ms. Kennedy will send out those dates and we'll get into more specifics in the budget, which I think are very, it's very critical for, for us to.
Okay. Having no further discussing, we'll call a vote.
Commissioner Y.
Yes.
Commissioner Bull.
Yes.
Commissioner Dandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Pino.
Yes.
And Rob.
Yes. Okay. This concludes our action items. We are.
No, we're still in action. We just want them closed session. So.
Well.
To some degree. So, okay. Let me make a motion then. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section 10-15-1 NMSA 1978 subsection H2 regarding limited personnel matters to our department administration.
Second, second. I have a motion as a second to go into closed session and sketch.
Commissioner Y. Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Dandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Pino.
Yes.
And Rob.
Yes.